Good afternoon. Welcome to the June 12, 2019 Seattle School Board Legislative Meeting. As we begin, we would like to recognize and honor the first peoples of the Puget Sound Territories by acknowledging that we are on the land of the coastal Salish tribes. We'd also like to welcome Jolinda Viveo, who is joining us on the dais this evening from South Lake High School. Ms. Viveo will have a chance to give her comments later in the evening. Roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Here.
Director DeWolff.
Present.
Director Geary.
Here.
Director Mack.
Here.
Director Petu.
Here.
Director Harris.
Here. And Director Pinkham is ill this evening and will not be joining us, but I know he's watching on Channel 26. Hi, Scott. If you care to, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are our students from West Seattle Elementary here? And ready to go? Outstanding. And thank you, Principal. Stand up and take a bow for your great crew. Okay, directors, front row so we can enjoy with everyone else.
We've been learning about how to collaborate and advocate for others and ourselves.
The reason we are here because we wanted to talk about something that actually meant something to us. We had multiple things we wanted to say, like school lunches, but we chose to talk about after-school programs.
After-school programs meant a lot to us because a lot of public schools didn't have it, and a lot of students needed it for like help with their homework and stuff.
Another reason it really meant to us because we felt as if we were having a privilege over other schools.
Hello, my name is Ubark, and today we will be talking to you about after-school programs. After-school programs give us a chance to interact with others and collaborate. Also, after-school programs give us health benefits. This is why we believe all schools in Seattle Public Schools should have after-school programs.
Hello, my name is Najma, and my partner, I will be talking to you about the health benefits of after-school programs.
After-school programs provide healthy snacks for students before they go off to their clubs. For example, if we didn't have after-school programs, kids would probably go to home and eat, and that's not very healthy for them. So after-school programs provide healthy snacks for kids.
After-school programs also help you with physical health by promoting healthy habits and healthy lifestyles. For example, I participate in basketball club, and that helps me stay healthy by making exercising fun. In a study shown by Youth G O V, it states, "After-school programs can play an important role in encouraging physical activity." After-school programs also help with mental health by giving you a place to learn, play, and make new friends. And make new friends. And make new friends. After-school programs are a great place to socialize, to have a social benefit. And Geneva and Xander will be talking more about that now.
Hi, I'm Geneva.
And I'm Xander. And we will be talking about the social benefits of after-school programs.
Many students at our school are shy, and if they sign up for an after-school program and make friends with people that have the same interests as them, they can be more confident, and it will be easier for them to make friends. For example, I joined a school play and met people I did not even know, and I became friends with them. After-school programs give students a place to do things they love, to explore new things, and it's a great place to make friends.
They can also be taught, students can also be taught life skills. One of the life skills students can be taught is how to work together. In almost every after-school program, students have to collaborate and work together to accomplish goals. For example, me and the leadership team collaborated to create this presentation for all of you. In an article from the Washington Post, it states, "It's where students are taught that sometimes failure provides the best learning opportunity for all."
My name is Nardos, and I will be talking to you about the academic benefits of after-school clubs. Are you a parent who's always worried about your kids failing school and not having as many opportunities as every other kid? Well, after-school programs could be a solution to your problem. Kids who go to after-school programs are more likely to succeed in life and get better jobs and for their future. The Washington Post states that kids who go to after-school programs are more likely to get better grades. For example, in West Seattle Elementary, I am in Leadership Club. In Leadership Club, we help around the school to make our school a better place for kids like me. If we didn't have Leadership Club, then we wouldn't be able to solve problems that are causing our student, affecting our students at West Seattle Elementary.
Hi, my name is Zemzen. I'll be adding on to Nardos. Kids who struggle school need more time in school so they can get a chance to learn their mistakes. After-school programs can encourage students by teaching them what the mistake and what there was, the same mistakes. Some students can improve their grades by going to after-school program. Some students used to fail, and now they improve by going to after-school program. This helps parents worry less about their student failing school.
Hello, my name is Kevin. In conclusion, kids who go to after-school programs benefit from health benefits, academics, and being able to socialize with students. If there is not after-school programs here, then we wouldn't be presenting to you.
We believe that all students in Seattle Public Schools have the opportunity to participate in after-school programs so that all students can have these benefits. We hope you agree. Thank you for your time for listening.
Rock stars, each and every one of you, and the school staff, and the CBOs that helped make that happen. I say we send this to Congress and Donald Trump. And Betsy DeVos. Can we say our names, which grade you're in, and pass it down here? And I'm wondering whether we could get this video to the principal's leadership T D come August and replicate this wonderfulness.
I'm Persia, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Kevin, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Zanzen, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Nardos, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Xander, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Geneva, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Koia, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Najma, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Ubark, and I'm in fourth grade.
Let's also send this to every member of the Washington State Legislature and tell them that's why we need more funding. Thank you very much. That was awesome sauce. Madam Superintendent, floor is yours.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of, when I visited West Seattle Elementary, this was the group that gave me a tour around and met me on every corner and talked to me about the greatness of their school and how much they loved West Seattle Elementary. So thank you for bringing it forward so everybody can see their greatness and the good things that are going on over there. I just really appreciate your leadership, and it shows when the students are out. So thank you. I would just, is Peggy in the room? Is Peggy going to be in the room? Fred Podesta, you had one job. I guess when she gets here, we can talk about her again, but I would just like to acknowledge and honor Peggy McAvoy. Peggy has worked for Seattle Public Schools for 33 years in various roles, from nurse to Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Her accomplishments on behalf of students are too numerous to name. However, her unapologetic focus on students and families furthest from educational justice is unsurpassed. The results of her work to pass Vex IV and BTA IV is seen throughout our city in beautiful new and remodeled buildings. She has worked in partnership with the city to get school-based health clinics in our high schools, and she has helped Seattle Public Schools get $30 million to improve student safety and to create supports for families and students. Just want to really take a minute and kind of open the floor, Madam President, to thank Peggy for all she has done for this organization, and more importantly, for everything she's done to better the lives of our students and families.
I'd like to take a pause, and when Peggy shows up, I'd like to have comments made at that time.
If she shows up.
She better show up. Come on, Peggy, we're counting on you.
I wanted to start by thanking Seattle Public Libraries and M.T. for their partnership around reading, and this is a congratulations to Bryant Elementary Global Reading Challenge winners. A huge shout-out to all of our schools that participated this year. Almost all of our K-8 and elementary schools participate. And so, M.T. is the chief librarian, and he does a lunch with the Global Reading Challenge winners every year, and so I was able to join them and talk a lot about books. Oh, here's Peggy. Peggy, I said so many nice things about you for once.
Ms. McAvoy, thank you, thank you, thank you. If I'd known this was happening tonight, I'd have brought you roses, but I guess I'd have to buy another tree. Your leadership through some really, really tough times is to be emulated. Your coaching has been extraordinary, both for staff, for board members. Your history and lessons learned and guiding us off of any number of cliffs is hugely appreciated. And know that you left this district one heck of a lot better than you found it. Thank you. Director Burke, Director Geary, Director Mack.
So, I want to also thank you from the bottom of my heart. There's a thing that happens when you're a new board director, where you come in and you're like, wow, what a strange and, and, putting words in my mouth, wonderfully strange. But awkward place to get engaged in because it's so foreboding and intimidating. And Peggy, from day one, has been collaborative, smiling, supportive. When I've come to her as an individual for specific issues, whether they're within her scope or not, her experience and focus on students and focus on doing what's right has always helped me get to a better place as a board director. So I want to share how grateful I am for your support, your coaching, and all the work that you did before my time, which is amazing.
Peggy, I hate goodbyes, so I'm probably going to get emotional. All the things that have been said, so true, just always a person that I knew I could go to with questions. But I think the thing that I appreciate most, and I'm so sorry to leave our institution, is your constant example of how, even occupying the role you're in, if there is somebody who has presented a problem or is in distress in a room, you always take the time to seek them out, hear what they have to say, and do your best to provide a response and get them going in a direction that is positive for them. And I have seen it here in this room, I have seen it in rooms throughout our city. And just in my position to have somebody come and testify to me, have that stream roll through, and then be able to look over and see that you've wrapped around that person to come up with a solution, is just, that is the heart of our district, and it is the role model for every other employee to emulate. So I am sorry you're gone. I hope that that spirit is held within the heart of every person who's had the pleasure of working with you. Thank you so much.
I too might actually get a little choked up here. I first met Peggy some 2013, and throughout all of the time of my advocacy efforts and then coming onto the board a couple of years ago, it has in fact been very true that her relentless focus on what's right for students in the district and being responsive and listening to what the problems are and the challenges that we face and trying to come up with positive solutions together in a positive frame has been unsurpassed, and I just really appreciate that. Your leadership internally, people inside call it your shop, it's Peggy's shop over there, all of the work around student safety and transportation and operations and all of these things, you've just done amazing work and amazing collaborative work, bringing community together and finding solutions. I will miss you a lot.
I've known Peggy for a while, since I've been here for a long time, but I've never actually been able to, when it comes to a problem, you know, I always can call on Peggy, and her and I will get together and come up with a solution. And I so appreciate you for that. It's always been a great memories to know that there's someone there that's actually can come up with a solution when you run out of problems, a solution to solve your problems. And I know a couple of times that we sat down and just started thinking about, what are we going to do now? Because some of the things that you and I both had gone through in terms of Tonari Sau, some of the things that needed to be done, but I just want to say, I really appreciate you and being patient and taking time to really assure me, Betty, we're going to go through this and really take care of it. So thank you for all the hard work that you do and the patience, because sometimes it takes me a little while to get it together, but you've always been a very patient person. So I appreciate you for that, and God bless.
Director DeWolff.
Thank you. Am I last? Do I get to go last? Okay, cool.
Doesn't mean you get to talk forever.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
That's right. Peggy, I, you know, I think there's a quote, I think that's out there, that nurses are the heart of healthcare. And you certainly are one of the hearts of Seattle Public Schools. So thank you for your measured and caring deployment, and calming, excuse me, deployment of your care and leadership in Seattle Public Schools. I know I will truly miss you and have been so honored to be able to work with you for the last two years, and wish you all the best in your next adventure, so.
Superintendent Juno, wrap her up.
All right, great. Peggy, I gave your accolades earlier and all your accomplishments on behalf of all your service to Seattle Public Schools, and that's one thing, but I also want to join this chorus up here personally thanking you for your kind heart, your generous spirit, and just everything that you continue to give for the students and staff of Seattle Public Schools. I've watched you work, I've heard you work, I've seen your work, and I could just join everybody that says this district is truly going to miss you, and I'm going to miss you. And so, thank you so much for everything that you've done for generations of this school district, and to know that you carry that on, but you leave a long, long legacy as well, one that we will continue to try to emulate and learn from and to be better because of your service to this district. So thank you so much.
Well, my final board meeting, and I just want to say to all of you and to the Seattle community, I've been very, very honored to work with all of you and support our families and our students, and this is incredibly complex and hard work. And all of my accolades that you read that I didn't hear about were because of a great team that we had here, and I could not have done it with all of the staff. So as we think about moving forward, I just want you to know, I like retiring because I know that we have got great staff that are carrying on. I'm so pleased to have Fred come, join us for operations. He truly can continue to carry the work forward, and I know that you guys will, in your governments and your leadership role, continue that. I also want to give you a final parting gift. It is a pin that says, "Heart of Seattle Schools." I've always considered myself part of the heart of Seattle Schools, but you are also part of it, and I want you to have that and to wear it and think about me occasionally as I move on. So, thank you.
I also got to help honor our new state champion, Garfield Girls Softball Team with Governor Inslee, Representative Pettigrew, and Senator Saldana. This is Seattle's first softball state champions ever. Thank you to Gail Morris and the Indian Education Department for celebrating our young Indigenous Student Scholars at Daybreak Star. It was a fun evening with lots of families. The staff put a lot of work into the gifts of the transition from grade to grade, and so it was a good evening had by all. This awesome group from South Shore's Racial Equity Team showed me the ropes at their school. This team has one student from each grade that works with their principal to make their school better. They had lots of opinions, but were just such a great group to visit with, talking about deep work that they know needs to happen at their school, but how they're so engaged in what that future looks like. Student Advisory Board, we had our last meeting this weekend. Students put their final touches on their presentations, so, and thanks to President Harris for coming for the lunch. These students are going to put some positive projects in place next year, so their next steps are meeting again in August, finalizing a project, meeting with their principals, and then figuring out ways to get some projects going to better their system. It's my understanding that at the last meeting of the year, we usually celebrate our state athletes, and I just want to also just thank Tara Davis for her leadership as the interim athletic director this year. Things stayed calm, it was great, and we actually got some great outcomes. Again, thanks to, congratulations to the Garfield Girls Softball Team for taking first place at state. Congratulations to Ingram High School Girls Cross Country Team for placing first for the Academic State Championship. These are nine athletes on their cross-country team with an average 4.0 GPA. It's awesome. Congratulations again to Ingram High School Gymnastics Team for placing first for the Academic State Championship, eight athletes with an average 3.86 GPA. Congratulations to Ingram High School Boys Soccer Team for placing first for the Academic State Championship, 19 athletes with an average 3.6 GPA. Congratulations to Nathan Hale High School Girls Track and Field Team for placing first for Academic State Championship, 31 athletes for an average of 3.87 GPA. And then there was also some individual results at the state tournaments. Swim and Dive from Roosevelt, Eric Elke Ombak. Gymnastics, Ballard, Girls Vault and Girls Bar from LeAnn Kissler. Wrestling, Nathan Hale, Boys 145 Weight Class was first place. Again, our first state champion in wrestling ever from Seattle Public Schools, Dominic Damon. Tennis, Nathan Hale, Girls Singles, first place, Mia. A lot in track, Girls Para-Athlete, 100-meter dash, 200-meter dash, and shot put, first place, Andrea Anaya. Garfield, Girls Triple Jump, Lyric Karis. Roosevelt, Girls 200-meter dash, first place, and long jump, first place, Camille Duckett. West Seattle, Girls Pavel, first place, Chloe Cunliffe. If there are any athletes in the audience or at home, or they can watch later, you know, I just offer a heartfelt congratulations, and thank you so much for making Seattle Public Schools proud. It shows, this list actually shows the real strength in student athletes, with an emphasis on student, and I know that we are all so very, very proud of you. So thank you so much. We had a lot of athletes at John Stanford, not really, but we did have a May Move-a-thon where everybody attempted to be a little athletic, and we put together a list, a lot of people participated. We had a lot of athletes at John Stanford, not really, but we did have a May Move-a-thon where everybody attempted to be a little athletic. And we put together a list, a lot of people participated. If you were ever up on second floor, we had this huge wall of charts for people to track their steps or their miles or their biking, whatever it is they put in. We'll get you an update on the actual miles that were put in over the month of May. This, we'd take off in a few little groups, walking around the area at lunch. And I just know that we, I would venture to say a million steps, but I won't quite say that. There were a lot of steps taken or a lot of miles moved. So, we'll get you an update on that. Thank you to Lisa Love and her team for organizing the Second Annual LGBTQ A+ and Trans Pride Flag Raising Ceremony at John Stanford Center for Educational Excellence for Pride Month. I'm so thankful to be part of an organization that honors all students and families. And just a thank you to Director DeWolff for being there to speak and to celebrate our staff and students as well. This is a picture of Alex. She is one of the leaders on our Climate and Culture Committee here at John Stanford. And she helped put together a phenomenal lunch for pride, had dancing and games and snacks and cake. She is actually a real force for positive change here at John Stanford. So, thank you, Alex and team, for putting that together. Small Cabinet and our executive assistants had a retreat where we all learned a little more about each other and how we work together as a team. And I just want to thank Chief Debacker for facilitating this event and putting that together. I think it was time well spent. This is Mr. Savino at West Seattle High School. He won the Professional Excellence Award for CTE and woodworking because of his work to incorporate student voice into all of his projects. You can see there this cool handmade ukulele that a student is making in his shop. West Seattle High School Principal Vance and I met last week and he showed me around the school. West Seattle High School has a great CTE program. In addition to that ukulele, you should see the beautiful wood glass inlay tables that are being made there. Acoustic guitar a student is making. So, they have a pretty phenomenal CTE wing on their building that is well-used and students learning great things there. Did you know that this is the only all-woman security team in the district at a school? Principal Vance is so very lucky to have them. Thank you for your leadership. To Principal Hendrickson, he and his students at South Shore Pre-K 8 are living the dream by incorporating student voice into their school. Again, I was led around by the Race and Equity Team, Student Race and Equity Team, so that was pretty cool. Principal Smith brought this group together to discuss the successes and opportunities at Rainier Beach High School. Just want to thank, thank you to our partners, The Breakfast Group and Somali Mothers Night Out for joining us during this school visit. Detective Cookie and Principal Lamb invited me to attend the annual van-assault chess tournament, chess tournament with them and South Shore, I believe. And they were so, so very good. These students were all lined up. I'll have to get an update on how that went, but we all know that chess, if you are a player, is something that you take the long view on. It's a lifelong game. I still enjoy playing as well.
Did you dance with Detective Cookie?
I did not dance with Detective. It was not a dancing event. This awesome mural is at the Northwest African American Museum where the Seattle Alliance of Black School Educators were celebrating their scholarship award students. Very cool museum. Again, this great group of special guests listened in on our Student Advisory Board presentations. A huge shout-out to our City Year partners for facilitating all year long. Thank you to our staff, Lisa Love, Rhonda Boy, Gail Morris, Christine Matfield, Ryan Healy, Gordon Fowles, and Brennan Hamm, who gave their time to teach students about their projects and be consultants to the groups of students. So, very, very powerful. And their work will continue. So, the Student Advisory Board will stay the same next year as they carry out their projects. So, they're super excited about that. And I just look forward to continuing the work as they gather momentum and put things into place. And I forgot to mention, at the end of my school visits, I have now visited all 102 schools, official visits. And so, those were something that really helped me learn about the district, brought me around the city. I learned a lot about our little communities and our neighborhood schools and our option schools and everything that's going on. So, I'm very thankful for our school leaders, for the staff that are in those schools, and most importantly, the students that I got to meet a lot of this year. And so, just really thankful to be the leader of this school district. And every time I'm out in schools, I just continue to be inspired by the work that's going on. So, no matter what we hear here and no matter what we hear out in the community, it's the days in schools when you know that we are actually doing great things, we're doing the right work. And I look forward to that work continuing with our school principals and our teachers and our students and our families across the district. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Jolinda, you're next up. So, tell us what we need to hear. Tell us what you want us to hear. Tell us what you like. Tell us what you don't like. Tell us where you're going.
Hi, my name is Jolinda Vivas Siva. I come from a big family and... Sorry. South Lake is really a good school. I'm a senior this year. And things that I like about South Lake is that we're very helpful of others. Before I attended South Lake High School, I went to Rainier Beach. And I ran a beach high school. It was very distracting, distracting to me. And I couldn't work, I wouldn't, I couldn't work well with bigger crowds. So, I, so I transferred to South Lake High School. And South Lake High School is very calm and you work individually with teachers, one-on-one. So, I like that. I get more help with the teachers at South Lake. And for me, I work well in smaller crowds. So, in some classes, there would be less students or more students. And South Lake, it's a really good school. They, this year, they actually increased a lot of resources for us, like with laptops and books and stuff. And sorry. That there's more student of color. There's more, there's more people of color. Yeah. And everyone gets along with each other. That's what I like about this school. People communicate. You don't have to feel nervous or shy around others. If anything, South Lake is like family to me. It's like my second home. And I love staying at the school at South Lake. I love helping the teachers. I love helping with graduation committee, prom committee, after schools, programs. Actually, South Lake, to me, is it's one of the best high schools I've attended, person, from my own, from my own perspective. And teachers, they help with students. Like, if you, like, two days ago, I thought I wasn't going to graduate just because of a credit I missed. But I thank Ms. Brown for pushing me to get where I needed to be. And honestly, about South Lake, I don't have any wrongs or there's nothing bad, I would say, about South Lake High School. Anything, any other questions?
What's next for you? You're graduating.
Mm-hmm.
What happens next? Hope, dreams, aspirations?
Well, I'm really interested in graphic designing. I love, I actually help South Lake with flyers and stuff. So, I make flyers, invitations, or posters and signs. Art is my passion. I come from a family who does art, which is my mom. She inspired me. So, that's where I get my talents from. After high school, I planned on taking a photography class. I also like photography. I like taking pictures and that, that connects to visual arts. I've also applied to Seattle Central College. And I was thinking about getting into Renton Technical College, too.
That's very exciting. Okay, other questions, comments? Director Gary? And then Director DeWolff.
So, you came to South Lake from Rainier Beach?
Yes.
But if you were to go into a middle school and talk to them about South Lake, what kind, which of the students would you say you're the one who should think about South Lake? Like, if we were to go out and say, "You don't need to try and go to Rainier Beach first. You should just come straight to South Lake," which students do you think we should be talking to?
Like, from race or?
No, no, just from, from middle schools. Like, would you, would you have liked the opportunity to go to South Lake from middle school and gone there the whole time?
Yes. South Lake requires many things, like, they help you with college applications, they help you with FAFSA, they help you with jobs, careers. They have applications at the Learning Resource Center we have in our school.
So, if you were in front of a group of middle schoolers and there were people talking about their high schools, what would you, what would you tell them in terms of, "You should come to South Lake"? What would you, what would you tell them about South Lake to get them to go to South Lake? Anything? If you were back, imagine yourself in middle school.
Mm-hmm.
And what would you have liked somebody to tell you about South Lake?
That you don't need to worry, or South Lake helps you. They make you feel welcome. It's more welcoming. Because I ran a beach, I was kind of scared because it was a big school. And it didn't work well for me.
I think that's an important message for us because we probably have other middle schoolers that need to know that there's a, a special school, not a special school, but a smaller school.
Yeah.
Where people take the time. So, I really appreciate you coming and talking to us today about how South Lake was a great fit for you and helped you to see your strengths and your future. Congratulations on your graduation.
Thank you.
So, in native culture, we often use stories to communicate. So, I'm curious, can you tell us about a time or a story about a great interaction with one of your teachers? Just some, a reaction with your teachers that was memorable for you?
Ms. Walker was my favorite teacher. When I was going through it outside of school, she helped me cope with things better, in a better way instead of a negative way. And one memory I wouldn't forget from her is that when we had sushi day, we made sushi and and one thing I wouldn't forget about her, she's always smiling. She's always positive. She's always pushing us. Like, no matter what we go through, she always see the good in us. So, yeah, that was one memory.
Thank you.
Director Patu, please.
Now, out of all the things that you've actually have done, in terms of what you were going through, what is the one thing that actually encouraged you to get, to be able to be, reach your goal?
What is the one thing that encouraged? Well, when I see other seniors graduating, that pushes, that pushed me to come to school even more. And that also motivated me. Like, if she and he can do it, I can do it. Like, no matter what I went through, I didn't let that stop me. And I still wanted to show my family and people who have doubted me that I can do it and prove them wrong.
So, with all that, what would be the one thing that you would actually say to encourage someone that's having decided whether to go forward or just quit?
If someone had doubted you or told you that you can't do it, I look at that as a motivation. Because then you can turn around and tell them that you did do it, that you...
Thank you.
So, I would encourage, sorry.
Thank you very much. I had a high school counselor that laughed in my face. The fact that she laughed in my face caused me to graduate because she did not believe in me. And I'm with you. That is motivation in a really big way. Way to go. Okay, we have come to the point where we are going to have committee reports. But Jolinda, I want you to know you are welcome to stay till the bitter end of the meeting. You don't get to vote, but you do get to ask questions when the rest of the board members do. And we very much appreciate your doing so if you choose to.
Okay.
Thank you. Who would like to go first? Director Gary?
And did you want me to cover A&amp;F as well?
I would appreciate it if you would cover AF and F, A&amp;F in Director Pinkham's absence.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate the offer.
Sure. So, last night, we had the final Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting for the year. I would say it was a lively, one of our livelier ones. We had always the joy of hearing from Gail Selhorst about the Creative Advantage Arts Partnership and how that is expanding throughout our district. More and more, I think we're up to 96 schools? Something close to that. So, the program is rolling out, making sure that we're making arts available, visual arts available throughout our district. And then later in the meeting, Gail reported on our music in the district as well and how robust that is. There was some, I think, a really good discussion around music and how at the elementary grades, it is delivered across the schools. Middle school, we again see a lot of kids participating, but there is a drop-off come high school. It has been noted that, to some degree, that there is racial inequities or the appearance of racial disparities within the music program. But I think it allowed for a really interesting opportunity because I thought of South Lake High School, having visited there several times, and the desire to build a music production program there and at Rainier Beach. And so, it made me realize that we need to look at music as a bigger umbrella and not decide that it's just instrumental music. But music means a lot of things, and it can have cultural significance in different groups for different types of participation in music. But nobody should feel excluded from any of those different avenues. But music is bigger than just a music program, and we need to recognize it as such and grow it as such and welcome everybody to participate in the portion that speaks to them. Because music is such a fundamental part of the human experience, and we need to recognize that. And I have always applauded South Lake for wanting to grow that down in South Seattle. We talked about ethnic studies, and I think we're moving forward to getting a bar presented or at committee, hopefully, come August. We talked more about the policies that should be introducing at our next board meeting, but not being approved until the end of summer, would be the school board dress policy. Or maybe we can get that done before the end of this summer. We're going to get that done in July. But dress policy, so that we will have a new dress policy for next year, one that is addressing some of the inequities around just stigmatization. So, hopefully, that will be going out and we can solve some of that. But there will be more engagement. Um, so hopefully that will be going out and we can solve some of that, but there will be more engagement. Around the issue of any school that has adopted uniforms so that they can understand how that policy will impact their individual communities. Flexibility has been built into the policy. Um, and then we are also continuing, moving forward, yeah.
Is there a number on that policy yet or?
That is three, two, two, four.
Okay, and if you don't mind, just, I know that there was a resolution passed recently by Seattle Council around dress code. But it's a resolution, not a policy, and I was wondering if that language was being considered in the development of the.
It is my understanding from Ronald Boyd that he has, he has. Wrapped around with many, many different groups and vetted the language to make sure, and I think everybody will be, um. Positively, like receive the language very, it is very, what does a student need to come to school? To gain access and it doesn't talk about gender-specific clothes, it tries to be very, very respectful of just a student being dressed. Um, and then we also are moving forward with the Students' Rights and Administration of Surveys and Analysis or Evaluations. So that was, I think, um, the meat of curriculum and instruction and what we are looking forward to moving forward on that. Um, looking at, um. Audit and Finance, we also had a really good meeting. And I think the two, some of the big things that came through that were really positive is that we'll be looking at a five hundred thousand per year grant. Um, for, to support community learning centers for over, uh, with the total of two million five hundred thousand over five years. Supporting community learning centers in four of our high-poverty and low-performing schools, so that will be bolstering those communities. And then we're looking at a, engaging in three point four million dollars of contracts with forty-three schools for after-school enrichment. Um, again, focusing on schools that have higher free and reduced lunch, uh, populations. And so I highlight those because there's going to be discussion tonight around funding our schools and how. Different sources of funding come into our different schools. We also talked about Policy sixty-one hundred, which is a policy that. And I'm, I'm being distracted a little bit because we've just had a whole lot of teachers join, um, join the board meetings, so welcome, everybody. We're giving our committee report right now, talking about, uh, I'm personally talking about the Audit and Finance report that happened last night since you're just coming in. Um, sort of dry. Um, and, but we've had to amend the Policy sixty-one hundred to talk about providing a, uh, a hearing right. If we're not using our enrichment money properly, and this has to do with the enacting of the levy lid coming down. And making sure that we're using our funds appropriately, um, with regard to. Not collecting levy monies in excess of what the state tells us we can in supporting basic ed. But then what we're also supposed to be looking at in terms of the supporting of enrichment. Which gets me to Policy sixty-one hundred, which is being amended, if you were to take a look at it. And what that policy basically says is that we as a school district are going to encourage the donation of money to our district. From any kind of source that is willing to give us money. And we will hear tonight about. A PTA, like many of our PTAs, who provide money to their schools. And this is one that has reached a level that it needs to come to the board. But this is a system that has been perpetuated and is supported by our own policy. So we do have a policy that really encourages people to go out and find money to, to support. The delivery of enrichment in Seattle Public Schools. So I just key that up because we were talking about that in Audit and Finance as well. Um, so. Though, that is my report on Audit and Finance and Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you. Director Matt, Chair of Operations.
Good evening, uh, it's been a busy time for operations, we had a, on June fifth, we had a student, uh, the, um. Student Assignment Transition Plan and Boundaries Work Session on, uh, the fifth where we. Had conversations about the planning and community engagement and so forth that's going around, um. For various areas, um, and schools in the city that, uh, may have changes made for the twenty-twenty dash twenty-one school year. Um, the timeline on approving those changes is. It needs to be completed prior to open enrollment, so everyone has sufficient notice, so in the fall. And, uh, we're targeting, um, that to be adopted or acted on by the board on November twentieth. Um, so you can look at the, um, the work session materials to get some information about, um. Uh, what was talked about and the following day, we had our Ops Committee meeting next door, uh, it did run long as usual. Um, but it was really rich and robust discussion around a lot of great topics, um. We did not get to review the Policy sixty-nine hundred and sixty-nine oh one, it was still being routed. Uh, but the delay doesn't concern me too much, I think that we're on track, we'll be bringing that, it'll be coming for discussion in August, um. We had robust discussion around the Policy thirty-one forty-three, which is the district notification of juvenile offenders. Uh, this has a WASD-A model policy and some really important language in there for the safety of our students, um. And, uh, we also are looking at another final acceptance, which is super exciting, on, um, Roxhill Elementary at E C Hughes. The School Traffic Safety Committee, which is a committee that's jointly run by the City of Seattle and Seattle Public Schools, came and gave us a presentation. We invited them actually only a couple of days before, um, and they gave some really good information about their, their work that they do to support. Uh, safe walks, safe routes to schools and all of this other, um, safety for our students at our, our, all of our schools. Uh, around the walk zones and transportation and those sorts of things, so it's really nice to have that, that committee doing great work that's. Spanning between S Dot and us and City of Seattle and so forth. Um, had a brief update about the P three pathway and capacity analysis from Mr. Podesta, kind of the framing of what that work is going for the, forward. And an, an awesome presentation around the work that, uh, Mr. Smith, our new Nutrition Services Director, I'm sorry if I'm giving the title incorrect, is doing. Across the district, I'm super excited about that. And we also moved forward with a recommendation for consideration to the full board, the Advisory Committee. That, uh, Capacity Enrollment and Facilities Master Planning Advisory Committee, we've been talking about this for a while, so. Uh, we moved that forward, expecting that to come for introduction on June twenty-sixth, so next board meeting. And. Oh, additionally, the last thing, we also, uh, decided that because of the level of complexity around. The Student Assignment Transition Plan and the boundaries conversations that are going on, we, we want to have another work session come August. Uh, to have that, uh, discussion with the full board so that we can, um, be ready for, for making the changes that need to be made. Um, and. That's our last op set meeting until August something or other, it's a ways away because we take a break. Um, so I wanted to actually tell everyone now, just to keep it in your mind, if you're interested in being present for it. There are four different open houses for the, or ribbon-cutting ceremonies for the new schools that are opening, the new buildings that are opening, and these are all very exciting. Magnolia, Ingram, Queen Anne, and Lincoln, um, they're being held on August twenty-ninth and September third, so right before school starts. I hope you can come celebrate those, uh, with us.
Okay, executive, and then we're gonna take a stretch break before public testimony starts. So, um, we met this morning, we don't meet again until mid-August. Executive Committee meetings are actually kinda rowdy and you might not think so, given the fact that it's senior staff and everybody's giving reports, but. I like them because it's an opportunity to have all the chiefs in one room. And blow up silos and work more collaboratively and, um, no shy violets in these rooms. And, and I want to say thank you to my colleagues on the Executive Committee, Director DeWolff, Director Burke. We tussle as well, but we do it openly, mostly respectfully, and we always leave the room friends. But you have diversity of opinion on your Executive Committee and I think that's a good and healthy thing. So, um, the really great news is the rollout that we were advised about for Seattle Super Readers, Super Readers. Rolling out this summer for twelve schools that have the highest percentage of African-American males, this is part of our strategic plan. It's a ramp up, there have been people working. Yell. Thirteen, not twelve, see, it's back and forth, it's collaborative and, and appreciate all the help I can get, thank you so much. Uh, we're working with community-based partners, we're working with Seattle, uh, Library, uh, superheroes are coming our way. And this is a really exciting way to, to launch this and also to get culturally appropriate books in the hands. Of our youngest readers so they can read about people that look like themselves. So, um, stay tuned, but this is a big lift, it's a different way of doing things. And let's be honest, sometimes the old ways weren't working all that well, so let's create a new paradigm, and I hate that word paradigm, it's overused. But this really is blowing up the box and it's exciting. We heard from our, uh, labor partners at six oh nine, who we respect and appreciate the hard work that their folks do. Every day to support our students and our staff. And we heard about the difficulties of filling these jobs, so if you know anyone that wants a job. That has an opportunity to work with children and with the extraordinary red shirts here in the room, send them our way, we're recruiting. Too many openings, too many people that are working overtime hours to cover the needs of our schools. Uh, we also heard from the Building Trades Council and we were working with the Community Workforce Agreements. This has been through Ops, this has, um. Going to be something that I think we can be proud of in retrospect, but we are going to appoint a task force, we're looking for the money. We're looking for the partnership of city, port, and county to lend us their expertise and their analysts. So that we can create apprenticeships, pre-apprenticeships, and family wage jobs, it is our moral obligation to do so. District seven appointment. As you know, our beloved Director Betty Patu has submitted a resignation effective July one. Which means that we have an opening. Or an appointment until the general election in November two thousand twenty-one. So it's a two-year appointment and the remaining six directors will make that appointment, it's statutory, it's Washington Administrative Code. And we want to be as transparent and inclusive as possible while still maintaining. The fact that it's the six directors that make that very difficult choice because let's say that there is a whole lot of talent out there. And I know for a fact that there's a great deal of interest. So, on Friday. There will be a portal made on the Seattle Public Schools website for folks to indicate their interests, letter of interest and a resume. And to send suggested questions to use for screening purposes. And probably late July, early August, we don't have the date set yet and the staff reminds me constantly. That there are a number of steps to, to take to make sure. That the process is an elegant one and inclusive and translations are made and phone calls are made. So that we cast the widest net possible, we'll have a forum at Rainier Beach High School in the community. And it's my hope that we get folks that are truly passionate about public education. And that we do a bang-up job of this appointment process, now all of it has to be done in public, Open Public Meetings Act, understand that and wouldn't have it any other way. Details to come, Friday we should have the, uh, the list, we've, we're looking towards. My colleagues' vacation schedules, et cetera, so that we can get as many folks at the DIAS and at the forum to make the appointment as possible. Summer is a difficult time, as y'all know, and I hope that everyone in this room has a terrific summer vacation planned. And with that, we're gonna take a stretch break until five-thirty when we start our public testimony, looking forward to it, thank you.